All right, good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Congress Select Board for Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart, if you would read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek and keep those in serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. And just for a bit of clarity, later on this evening, we have a discussion of the Edoville Project. I've scheduled a separate round of citizens' participation for that item. So I would say unless you can't stay until that item comes to our, comes up on our agenda, this part round of citizens' participation would be for something other than the Edoville Project. Is there anyone who would like to speak to something other than the Edoville Project this evening? Okay.
Mr. Chin.
Mr. Hart.
I just wanted to let the board know and the public and anyone watching that I'm keeping an eye on my phone. I had a personal problem today that, just waiting to hear back from a doctor, so I might get a phone call. So I don't want it to seem like I'm rude. I'm checking my phone all the time, so I just want people to know that.
Appreciate it. Let us know. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda are applications for appointment to the Recreation Committee. We have two applicants, Jackie Lake and Donnie Beeland. I know this was scheduled for 5:40. Are both applicants here? I see Ms. Lake. Do we know, Ms. Weston, do we know if both applicants were planning to attend?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Ms. Lake, maybe we could talk to you first and by the time we're done, hopefully the other applicant will be here. Thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about why you'd like to be on the Recreation Committee?
So, in general, I like to serve. And I do have a child who's six. And I want to see what type of things that I can bring to the table when it comes to new programming, maybe, maybe finding grants to assist with finding monies for new programming. So I have, I've been doing policy. I'm right now on the Wellness Committee for Carver, the school district. And I've experienced with policy and programming. I've worked in recreation before for a year or two back in California when I lived there. So I understand kind of formatting, what type of things can get done with that. Plus, I've worked with kids for 20 years. And then also adults and adult programming and special needs. I really wanted to see some, maybe some special needs programming coming into the town.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Lake?
My typical question, how did you find out about the opening?
Um, I've been wanting to get involved, so I've been looking. And I've seen this post for a little bit, and I just felt like this was probably a good time for me.
Post where? See, I like to track where it is because we need to like fill things. So did you see it? Where'd you see it posted?
Just on the, on the town website.
Okay, the town.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. And I know you have involvement, is it the Boy Scouts? I know, I think I've seen you at different breakfasts.
Girl Scouts, I'm the treasurer of the Girl Scouts.
Okay.
Yeah, for the town.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from Ms. Lake?
Just thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
Okay.
All right. Anything else you'd like us to know?
I don't think so. I think I'd be good for the position. I have some good ideas. So I hope that I get it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Is, is Donnie Beeland here? Ms. Weston, they confirmed that they were coming this evening? All right. Well, it's 5:36. I would hope they would, to be here. What would the board like to do? Would the board like to move to the next agenda item but then come back to this? Or would the, the board like to vote based on the applications we have?
Give them the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, since it was scheduled for.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll move on to the Redevelopment Authority presentation of a check to the Select Board. So if we have representatives of the Redevelopment Authority here?
Yep, we're here.
All right. Come on up. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Savory Moore. I'm Vice Chair of the Redevelopment Authority. And with me tonight is Joanna Layton, who is a member of the Redevelopment Authority, but for a long time was our treasurer. A long time. We've had a property in our care at 90 Forest Street for quite some time now. And we've been trying to sell it to, to gain money for the town. And it's gone, it's been on our agenda on the RDA for probably close to five years. Through COVID, through all sorts of different potential buyers who turned around and then said no. But finally, about six months ago, I would say, six, seven months ago, we had a buyer come in who, who signed, signed it, you know, dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. And we were able to sell the, the property at 90 Forest Street. There are some of us on the RDA who are going to miss 90 Forest Street being on our agenda. But it's, it's a better thing that we've done for, for the town. And the result of that is that I have a check here from the Redevelopment Authority for the town of Carver in the sum of $105,893.09. The property was originally, was sold for $180,000, but with all of the lawyer fees that were associated and all of the back taxes that had to be paid on this, the final, the final amount that goes into the coffers of the town of Carver is what I said.
Let's back up. It was 175.
175, okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There was, yes, it was. It was 175,000. There was another deposit made by a potential buyer for $5,000 that was non-returnable.
Right.
So that's what the total amount was, $180,000. So anyway, I will give this to you, John, to ask over to.
The finance man over there.
Mr. Townsend.
Well, just thank you on behalf of the town. We really appreciate all the hard work that the RDA put into.
Well, thanks, thanks is due. The RDA did a lot of work and our chair, our chairwoman Sharon Clark did a lot of work trying to find a missing deed, as did everybody in Town Hall. There, there was a deed that just could not be found, and it was a long search process to get it. And also, we owe thanks to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The lot was not non-conforming with frontage, but it had been grandfathered in a while ago. It was a conforming lot when the frontage was 100 feet, and that's the way it had been for a long time. So the Zoning Board of Appeals, on two separate occasions, granted an extension of the variance to allow for the 100 feet that allowed us to sell it. So thanks goes to the ZBA as well for, for enabling us to finally sell this property. This is not the first property that the Redevelopment Authority has sold, and I'm going to turn this over to Joanna, who will tell us a little bit about, very briefly, about what we've been able to do for the town prior to this.
I just want to add one thing to what he says, that we paid the back taxes. $37,944.71 were the back taxes that we paid out of the, the various fees that we have. We always did that. Our MOU always explained that. When I show you, and you have this paper that I handed out earlier on this here, I just wanted to let you know that the RDA has been doing this since 2009.
Joanna, why don't you turn that around, and maybe Area 58 can, can you zoom in on that, Area 58?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll talk to the, I have to talk to the board, okay?
Yep. So you don't have to hold that up permanently. I just wanted them to be able to zoom in on it one time. That's all for the folks at home.
Let me get this piece of paper.
Because you're sort of blocked from the crowd right now, I think, so.
Well, I was really surprised so many people came, but thank you anyway. But anyway, as, as the top line says, 13 years of real estate, we returned to the town since 2009. I just need to tell you, the RDA became a committee in 2006. We didn't have any money, no CPC. We had to realize, but we had Jack Franny. Jack Franny was the treasurer collector at that time, came to our committee and says, you know what? We can get money. Back taxes. Oh, we pay that first, you know, we'll have the title, land, and we could sell that. And we created a model. Our model said, okay, we're going to have an MOU. We'll pay the back taxes and we'll sell the property through the real estate. And we use Brenda Titus then and would still use her today. These various properties came to us through the tax title properties. And here, it tells you that in the 13 years, the bottom line is, we've returned $649,209.93 back to the town. After we took away or returned back taxes at the time of taking, minus the RDA expenses, our admission, administration fees, our 10% were then and still are, and our lawyer fee, of course. I wanted to do this tonight because so many people, like you, are new to the committee. I'm a charter member, 2006 to the RDA. And so I presented this to my committee, the last meeting we had, and I said, okay, along with the check, you really need to know how much the RDA really gave back to the town. So I know you appreciate it. It's hard work, but we love it. And maybe in our little spare time, we can pick that up again? I don't know. We'll see.
I'm glad, I'm glad you did. This just speaks to all the hard work the RDA does. And Mr. Moore, as far as what you said regarding different folks in town working together to get this property sold, that's just another example of the way different departments and committees in Carver work together.
Yes, everyone had a common goal to get this done, and we finally did.
Any comments from the board?
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Yes, much appreciated. And I think maybe Mr. Fennessey should have that job.
I think so. Believe me, I plan on passing it over to Bob as quickly as possible. I want no response.
It wasn't made out for cash, so.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, folks. We appreciate it very much. Thank you for all your hard work. Please pass that along to your entire, entire board.
We sure will. Thank you.
All right. Getting back to our previous agenda item for the Recreation Committee appointment, is Donnie Beeland here? All right. Well, I don't see, we're past 5:40 now, so I, I think we could probably vote on this. Is there a, is there a motion from the board?
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint Jackie Lake to the Recreation Committee.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor of Ms. Lake?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Lake. I think I see you in the back there. Congratulations. Don't forget to visit the town administrator and get sworn, uh, the town administrator, the town clerk and get sworn in. She's here till 7 o'clock, absolutely. Thank you. Congratulations.
And that appointment is to June 30th, 2024.
Well set with that? All right. Moving right along. Next up is a discussion of the Edoville residents' housing proposal pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, and possible, a possible vote entering negotiations to mitigate the potential effects of the currently proposed residential project. I have added citizens' participation for this particular project to the agenda, and we'll also hear from a couple of other folks. After we have, what we'll do first is I'll ask the town planner, Mr. Bott, to come up and give us a brief overview of the whole 40B law. At that point, we'll give folks who would like to speak to the board or let us know their thoughts, a chance to come up and tell us. I would ask you to all just try to keep to our regular citizen participation guideline of, of three minutes a person. I want to give everyone a chance to speak who would, who would like to speak. After that, I think we have a couple of public safety chiefs here. If they'd like to, I'll give them an opportunity to come up and discuss their thoughts with the board as well, and then the board will, will discuss the matter. So, Mr. Bott, I will turn it over to you. Thank you, by the way, for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Absolutely, Mr. Carter. Thank you. Mr. Bott, thank you.
All righty, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Bott, I'm the town planner here in Carver, Mass., and thank you for having me tonight. What I want to run through is essentially the particulars of 40B and the town's past efforts at creating affordable housing through master plan and the Affordable Housing Plan documents. So much of the information that I have tonight is actually from things that we've already, the town's already agreed on through the master planning process, which took a couple years, about five or six public meetings. And a lot of that information from the master plan went into the housing production plan as well. So, so why are we here tonight? Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, was passed in 1969 based on a housing crisis in Massachusetts. That crisis, to many, remains issue today in having adequate housing to support a viable economy for the future, based on having places, people to work, workers and their families to live in order to support the state and regional economy. We hear on a pretty regular basis about the high cost of living in Massachusetts, in eastern Massachusetts, and a lot of firms, a lot of organizations are saying, it's very difficult to attract workers here because of the housing issues. So we talk about housing issues, not talking about just in the town, but we're talking about in the region. But each town, from the state's law, has their part to participate. That state law under 40B said that if a town doesn't have 10% of their housing stock as deed-restricted affordable housing, they're susceptible to a 40B development. That allows a developer to override the local zoning with a comprehensive permit to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Carver presently has 3.1 of its housing listed as deed-restricted affordable. That's 142 units. Another 344 plus or minus units, depending upon which count you're looking at, and an updated housing production plan are likely to qualify for safe harbor. And a safe harbor is where the town could say no to a future 40B. Essentially, the town has done their part. They're at 10%. They have a production plan. They're meeting that production plan, and they could say no to any other 40Bs if they're at that 10%. Now, a friendly 40B is essentially a LIP program, which is techno-speak for what we talk about at the state level. There's a couple of different issues, and we'll talk about a couple of them on our way. But a friendly 40B is a project that has local support because of the contributions it makes to the community's needs for more diverse housing options and the contributions the developer agrees to make to local needs. Infrastructure, public safety, land protection, et cetera, are those things we typically see. So what has the town of Carver had to say about this need? Well, here, a couple of slides. This is the 2017 master plan, the 2017 Carver Housing Production Plan that followed it shortly afterwards. And then from a few years back, we have the master plan from 2001 and the housing production plan previous to that that was 2009. So the 2017 master plan and its housing and land use goals says, land use policies protect Carver's small, town, rural character by encouraging growth in preferred areas. And they go on to say, the, the growth can benefit the community if it's done in a collaborative, efficient, and with consideration of Carver's, I knew I was going to do that, with consideration of Carver's neighborhoods and natural resources. A further housing goal, 5.1, said to allow modest mixed-use and multifamily housing in village areas. And that bottom line, they go on to say, and this is from the plan, allows more housing units in the traditional village format, will provide needed housing options, and will create an outlet for growth that doesn't threaten Carver's rural land. A further housing goal, 5.3, is to gain more control over Chapter 40B comprehensive permits by increasing the number of eligible units for the subsidized housing inventory. And the subsidized housing inventory is that list that the Commonwealth holds that says what your percentage is, and we're at 3.1. So every unit we create is eligible for the subsidized housing inventory, and as we build that, we get closer and closer to the 10%. I've always maintained that your goal shouldn't be to get to 10%. Your goal should be to create as many affordable housing units as you can, because there's a need. So the bottom line of this is approving a housing production plan and meeting that housing inventory will give Carver that control that we talked about in the safe harbor. So a couple of land use strategies along the bottom, land use strategy 3.1, the planning board should work to make existing village, district bylaws more user-friendly and encourage mixed-use development, and housing strategy to locate future 40B comprehensive permits developments in appropriate locations and create design standards and rules and regulations. So what type of housing is needed in Carver? Well, from the plan, they quote, there's a demonstrated lack of subsidized housing in Carver for all income levels under the regional median income. Some units should be targeted to Carver's growing elderly population. Additionally, the master plan's public input process identified housing for town employees as a major housing need. Municipal employees who meet the project eligibility requirements, among those categories, who could receive preferential treatment for new subsidized units as, as we get through the lottery process, and we won't get too deep into the weeds, and those are known as local preference units. So the plan goes on to say, Carver's, Carver's changing demographics reflect common nationwide trends of smaller, older households as baby boomers, become empty nesters and retirees. Additionally, the number of households with children are decreasing, and over half the households in Carver are either one- or two-person households. These trends have been linked with increasing demands for smaller homes with lower maintenance needs and particularly rental and condominiums. Now, what is 40B not? 40B is not low-income housing. Affordable homes, apartments, and condominiums are for those who make less than 80% of the median household income for the area. That area is the Boston Metropolitan Statistical Area. So the same rents that are in Boston are the rents that they're calculating here for Carver. That's the system. So that median income is $140,200. So the income level for most of the residents in the affordable units is $78,300 for one person, $111,850 for a family of four. The affordable rents are capped, and these are the affordable rents, not the market rate rents, the affordable rents are capped at $1,957 a month for a studio and $2,908 for a family of four in a three-bedroom unit. Now, that rent doesn't include utilities, because the thing about affordable housing is particularly in, is that 30% is the maximum amount of someone's income that they can spend on housing. That's that threshold. And so that rent would include utilities as well. So what's an affordable rent? 25% of the 366 units, 85 would be restricted as affordable. So those 85 units would be affordable based on anyone with an income between $78,300, as we just talked about, for one person, and $111 for a family of four. So those maximum affordable rents, $2,097 for one-bedroom units, $2,517 for two-bedroom units, and $2,908 for three-bedroom units. And that's based on the 2022 Massachusetts Affordable Housing Program income and rental limits. So those goals, housing production plan goals, goal one was to target those modest mixed-use and multifamily to the village area. Clustering housing developments in a traditional village format would provide much-needed housing options and will create an outlet for growth away from Carver's rural and groundwater recharge areas. Modest mixed-use and multifamily units, including year-round rental options, will match demand created by major emerging demographics of smaller households and elderly households for smaller, in smaller units with lower maintenance needs than larger single-family homes. For the most part, the default that we see across Massachusetts for 40B is homeownership, single-family houses. So most of the 40Bs that come to many towns are ownership, not rental. And they are typically three-bedroom units detached. So you don't see a lot of 40Bs that have one- and two-bedroom units unless they are in a condominium or a townhouse or, or rental scenario like this. So those modest units would help create local options for young Carver residents forming their own households and for local employees such as teachers and firefighters. Goal number three is to meet those numeric housing production goals. Carver aims to meet, and this is from a 2017 plan, Carver aims to meet its annual production goals of 23 or 45 affordable housing units eligible for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory. Meeting subsidized housing production goals provide more options for households with limited income and give the town greater control over the provisions of Chapter 40B. Public meetings participant, public meeting participants especially wish to avoid 40Bs developments that did not fit in with the town. So what were some of those goals? The targets for subsidized housing production for the next five years from 2017 were rental 40Bs in the Village or the Business District. And they anticipated, well, maybe there'll be three or four projects that come along as 40Bs. And those would sum about 95 units. So they thought, well, it's conceivable, if we get three or four 40Bs, we might net 95 units. The town aims to direct that village-style housing or retrofits of underutilized commercial properties in those zoning districts, village, business districts. The housing action map that you'll see in just a second includes the Village District at Sampson Pond and the general business districts on Tremont Street and South Carver, just south Main Street. So that's what the map looks like. I knew I was going to do that again, didn't I? So on the left, we see the full map, and I zoomed in to, to the detail of the map, and I sort of penciled in the 40B location. So the 40Bs, 40Bs up there in the left, because I keep moving my cursor and it keeps going away. So we'll detail that a little bit more. So this is the, this is the Google map, basically from the area that the production plan had talked about, the South Carver Village District and where this is at. So it's about two, two and a half miles away. But Edoville is not within a village or a village business district or a general zoning district. It's in a tourist commercial district on a previously developed and perhaps underutilized property. So from the perspective of 40B, does it matter what zoning category, what zoning district, and it is not? 40Bs can go in any particular zoning district. So there's a maximum size of a 40B that can imposed upon a town related to the number of existing houses in town. For Carver, it's 200 units based on the 2020 census count of 4,903. The threshold is 5,000. If for some reason they were to look at the recount of the census and say, oh, we missed 97 houses, we might be at 5,000, and that cap would likely be 20, 250 units. But it's, it's easy to miss a person in the census, it's tough to miss a house. So I'm fairly confident that 200 is that maximum unit. So the ZBA could deny a 40B that's over 200 units, but they also could approve one. So Carver likely needs 344 units to add to their subsidized housing inventory to get to that 10% required under 40B. And the safe harbor requires both an updated housing production plan as well as actual production units built. You get credit when something's approved, but you actually have to build those houses to keep them on the subsidized housing inventory. For rental units, although only 25% of the units to be built, 336, would be affordable, 85 affordable, all 100% of the units count on the subsidized housing inventory. And I think this is a carrot that the Commonwealth offered to towns that says, consider the merits of doing rental, because we know it's difficult for lots of communities, but the bonus that you get is you get all 336 or 100% of the units you're creating, not just the affordable ones on the subsidized housing inventory plan. If you were to do strictly an ownership program and say, we want single-family houses or smaller houses and things like that that weren't rental, you need to build 1,376 new units to get that same net on the subsidized housing inventory. But you'd net 344 affordable units rather than just the 84 to this. But you'd net 344 affordable units rather than just the 84 to this project that is built, as proposed. So that's basically the points I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and I'm happy to stay here and answer any questions before or after.
All right. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Hoffman?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Bott. So to go back to the, to go back to the what's affordable rent, so 25% of the 336 units restricted as affordable. So if, if it's, if it ends up being the 200 unit, it would still be 25% of those?
Correct. The rent's still going to be the rent.
Okay. And that's, that's what's the affordable rent, which is controlled by what you had outlined. So that means 75% is open?
Are market-rate units.
Okay.
And so 40B works this way, is that the market-rate units underwrite the cost of the affordable units. Because usually when we're building single-family homes, I don't have the number in front of me, but it's essentially $212,000 was the price for an affordable house, single-family house. And it costs about $200,000 to build a house with sticks and bricks and labor. So those developers are essentially not making any money on the market, on the affordable units. So you have to have a robust market to do a 40B in, in order to get that top market-rate dollar they're looking for to subsidize the cost of the other units. And the absence of those higher, whether rents or sale prices, is difficult to do a 40B to make it, make it happen for the developer.
So even though the project is considered 40B, and all 336 or all 200 would be counted, not all the 200 of 336 are affordable?
Correct. Only 85.
Okay.
Ms. Yount?
So, an affordable, the rent amount that is affordable, is that 2,000 and change? That's considered affordable? Those numbers are set by the state?
That is considered affordable, and that is a product of what region you are in. And Carver is in the Boston Metropolitan Statistical Area.
And that makes the prices go up?
So the rents that they get in Boston, the affordable rents they get in Boston are the same as the affordable rents here in Carver.
Okay. So could you just elaborate a little bit on the difference between affordable versus low-income?
I don't know. I don't know what low-income is. There's a range of incomes that you can cover under 40B. You can go all the way down to 30% of the average median income for the area. You can go up to 110% for a 40B, but that 110% won't count on the subsidized housing inventory. As I've said before, 40B is not low-income housing. If this was a program, it certainly wasn't designed or ever written for, for low-income housing. Because as you saw those income levels, $70,000 is the income for one person.
So the way I'm reading it as affordable is 80% of the average median income?
That's correct. And that rent is locked in at 30%.
Which is a pretty high income.
Yeah. So, and that rent is locked in at 30% of that income.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sorry. So a lot of, I've been talking, obviously, to a lot of people about this, and I keep getting Section 8 thrown at me. Section 8, 40B, I know there's a difference. So just for everybody's clarification, so the Section 8 is basically the low income that we're referring to?
Yeah. So there previously had been Section 8 developments.
Okay.
But that's not something that happens anymore. If someone has a Section 8 voucher and they can qualify for a unit, they certainly could get a unit. But there's no such thing as a Section 8 housing development.
Okay. Because that's where a lot of...
Yeah. No, I think the thing that people tend to bring in, bring to mind is, in Plymouth where I live, Algonquin Heights. Like, oh, is this going to be Algonquin? It's not, because that's not, that's not what they build anymore. They've realized that that's not really the best program. Move those things forward.
And then one other, one other quick question. As far as, on this project, say, you know, we've all been told that 200 units, rarely we can't stop, it's part of the process. Is there a, any type of rule, or what would stop a developer from putting an additional 136 or 200 more in the same area under a different plan?
For the most part, the Commonwealth looks at segmentation of things, like for procurement and things like that. I don't have a particular that you did Phase One and Phase Two, but I suppose someone could come back and try to do that, and basically take another piece of property. So we're assuming that the acreage that they've got shown on your site is what this 40B is. So they wanted to take another part of their developed property at some point and carve it off and say, we're going to do a second 40B over here. They likely could do that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Bogart, do you have anything?
So I just wanted to make it clear. My understanding is that the quote-unquote friendly 40B of 336 units is an option that we could have that would give us some kind of control maybe over the negotiation of the project, what it might look like, what...
Correct. The friendly 40B basically says, the select board has said, we think this is a good project because we are working with the developer to deal with some of the mitigation issues and things like that. But at some point, one of the things that you can't do is render a condition, the ZBA cannot render a condition to a 40B that renders it uneconomic. So you can't say, you're putting this thing in, we want the developer to bring municipal water to South Carver. We want, because that's the amount of dollars they have to take out of their pocket. It renders the project uneconomic, and that's clear cause for it to be shot down. Now, the typical appeal of a 40B goes to the Housing Appeals Committee. Not to, the Housing Appeals Committee, their design is to approve affordable housing. So the typical stories we've heard is a town will go to the HAC on an appeal and say, this development is going to, you know, ruin our schools. We don't have enough schools for these kids. And the HAC has said, well, you're going to need to build more schools, aren't you? You know, we don't have sewage capacity for this development, or not sewage, because that's a Title V issue. You know, we don't have enough crossing guards, whatever the case is. And the HAC has not been particularly sympathetic to towns in their investments. They've said, but it's too bad they get to do this. And so you always want to cut the best deal that you can from day one, working with the ZBA, whether it's a friendly 40B or a standard 40B.
So I guess that begs the question, if the select, the select board doesn't decide whether this 40B goes through or not, first of all, that's the zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
So if the select board should decide to enter into negotiations first, then that, those negotiations would then be carried off by the zoning board of appeals?
Well, those negotiations would come to the zoning board of appeals and says, here's what we, here's what we've agreed, the town, the select board, and the developer. So that would go to the ZBA as those, those conditions that the ZBA would impose upon the developer.
And if we should decide that we don't want to enter into a friendly 40B because of the drain on the schools, systems, or public safety, or for whatever reason, they can do a 200 unit by right?
They can. 200 is the maximum that can be imposed upon the town for a 40B. And local requirements are waived, but state requirements are not. So Title V, wetlands, we talked about a couple things. If this would not necessarily need a public water supply and a package plant, and both of those things are regulated by the state.
But, but the, so just to be clear, my understanding is, any kind of 40B, they get to, they get to do an end-around under all local regulations, Conservation Commission and Planning Board, like that. But they, but, so ZBA has to kind of pretend that they are those boards?
They are, they are the comprehensive, they give all those permits, and they ask all these departments what it is. And so like where we have a provision for 65 feet from a wetland, well, that's not the state regulation.
Correct.
So they wouldn't be 65 feet from a wetland, they'd be 100 feet from a wetland, and things like that. It's not the local regulations, it's the state regulation.
Actually, they could be within 25 feet, because the state's okay with that.
I stand corrected.
That's okay.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bott. Before we move on to citizens' participation, Mr. Fantasy, we have a number of people out in the hall. Do you think we might be able to take a five-minute recess and try to find a few more chairs?
Yeah.
Let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll try to find a few more chairs to get people in the room, okay?
It's not like you can just say, oh, it's like a bad guy. But that's up to the developer. That's the problem. Of course it's present.
All the things that you could say, well, she might have to be a side, but they would say, too bad. But they might say, yeah, we'll give you some stuff like that. So the two, how's it, we have two, flat, same place. Yeah, I've got a little calculation. It's got some assumptions in it, but we know those, we know those numbers, yeah. Yeah, you're right. No.
No, because they, nobody at all, they have a building over the place. Say we had 1,000 kids on the street. Okay, so you know the 1,000, like, but why would you, and, oh, that's what they say. Oh, the state is lots of them. Yeah.
And it's even worse if you know the state rewards you for doing the apartments versus houses, where you count 100% of the things that happens, which is like...
That's 30%, so that's, Peter had said it was 78,000, that's 80% of the average. Probably like 30,000 or something. So I know people are really worried about that, but that's not an issue. Issues are serious. Well, they have, they're doing their own, that's his problem. Who knows?
Are there chairs downstairs in like meeting rooms?
There's a podium. Hold back here a little bit. Put down a little chair. Yeah.
Well, I know we need three more chairs.
But you need to knock it down.
So you guys are both, they are directly, I mean, it's, 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 generation, I think, um, I was just saying, it's, it's, I think one of us, it's, it's, I think, 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 But I would really, really, really like to see some push for 55 and over community down there and not a family, all families. Because if it went 55 and over, we'd have less cars, less people, and less impact on our community, and less impact on the water. I mean, I was looking at the parking. The parking, they're only gonna allow a car and a half per unit for parking? A family of three, you drive anywhere in our community, we have four cars in some of our homes. You're not, where is everybody else gonna park? A car and a half is all you're allowed? That makes no sense to me. It doesn't, right? Will GATRA have to be increased? Will we have buses going through our community because of this? Now you're gonna have the impact of the buses going through the community. Again, I'd rather see the 55 and over as many as we can get. There's, I've traveled 23 towns in this state, and they have the 55 and over 40B. And they're working better than with the community. Do they allow communities and families into these houses? Yes. If you have a disability, yes, you can get into a 55 and over community. There's little kids running around them, but that's not the problem here. We love kids. It's, we've got beautiful schools, and we can't afford anything else. And I don't want to take up anyone else's time. But I care about our soil, our water, our emergency services, and all the other items that can be affected by this community that they want to build here.
Thank you, Ms. Fran. All right, who would like to go? Dormer?
Mary Dormer, 162 Plymouth Street. I would just first like to say that all of these people showed up tonight to say something about this. And I'm going to go out there on a limb tonight and say that most of us are against the 336 units. And all of these people, probably most of them, came out and voted for the select board. And I would ask that you listen very closely and that you really think about doing what we ask you to do, which is not to approve 336 units. First of all, there are a lot of people in Massachusetts that are looking for housing. And while Mr. Bott said that 40B is not low-income housing, what is going to happen is they are gonna get the voucher for the low-income housing. And I have nothing against people that are low-income. I think it's great. But it is gonna be another Algonquin Heights. It is going to be what's happened in Plymouth. There are going to be units that are empty. Because frankly, anybody, young professionals working in Boston, are not gonna travel to Carver to live in an apartment to then travel back to Boston every day. They're just not gonna do it. So we're not gonna get the young people. We're gonna get families. And it's not, $1,900 for a studio is not affordable. It's not. So you're gonna have to have state assistance for that. We also have four or five mobile parks in town. Why aren't they included in our 40B? I know that Sarah, I found an article online where Sarah says, "I think it would be helpful to ask for a lower percentage of mobile homes to be counted as affordable." I certainly agree, mobile homes would be counted as, should be counted as affordable housing. There's something wrong with 40B that removes all local regulations and local rules. There is something wrong with it. Additionally, under the, Fosse-O'Neal put out a final plan for the sole-source aquifer. And one of the things that they questioned about, all eight towns, is to watch what you're gonna do with the development in town. Because guess what? It affects the water. That water over there, if it's 200 units, you know that water has to be tested. And it's gonna be the state testing it. And once the state tests it, they're probably not gonna be able to build over there because it is contaminated. There are bogs all around it. There's pesticides and everything. So I'm asking you, do not approve the 336. Make it known that you only want 200.
Thank you, Ms. Fran. All right, who's next? Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name's David Burns. I live at 36 Pine Street, directly across from Edenville. So I've had the impact of Edenville since 2005, when I purchased my home. I have no problem with Mr. Delap Scully making a living. But every time we've been before this board and we've spoken with the homeowners, you've all spoken with the homeowners, we've gotten screwed, and he's done what he wanted. Now, we gave him a blanket permit 12 years ago that said he could do whatever he wanted in Edenville without going to the town. And in return, he gave up the right to build houses. To build housing in Edenville. Correct? So we know I'm all right on that. I don't have a problem with the housing. I have a problem with Mr. Delap Scully owning the house. Any 40B in this town needs to be owned by this town. And that's how we'll pay for all the extra services that we're gonna need. The road is too small. There's no traffic lights. There's no stop signs. What are you gonna do when you add 350-plus cars to a street that can't handle the houses that are there now? As for the water, my well keeps sucking sand. Because up the street, there was a pond approved for three acres. It's now 12. The board still has not stopped them. So how are we gonna do this? And I'm looking at the plan for those houses, for those condos. Not only are they too close to the wetlands, two of them are on top of them. One of them is on top of a non-potable well. How do I know that? It's in front of my front door. Now, I'm not saying I don't want the 40B. I'm saying the town needs to own the 40B. Mr. Delap Scully has been remiss in a lot of things with this town. And his public record, he still hasn't, I don't know if he's done it yet, but he's behind on the taxes. This board needs to take Edenville by eminent domain. We'll build the 40B housing ourselves. We give Mr. Delap Scully what he asked for. He wanted to sell Edenville? Thank you. We'll buy it. Minus everything you owe in back taxes, we build the 200 units ourselves, which we can partner with a finance company. We'll make money off of the interest of it. Other towns are doing this where they're selling units for $150,000.
Mr. Burns, I do, I appreciate your comments, but I do have to actually wrap it up just because I want to give everyone who wants to speak a chance to, a chance to speak this evening.
I ask that you guys bring it to the town. Every single voter in this town gets a vote. And we take it by eminent domain and protect this town. We'll make the money to pay for the extra services and everything that we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next this evening?
My name's Carrie Santos. I live directly across from the Edenville parking lot, 22 Pine Street. I live next door to Jean Taylor and Alan Germain, who is a very active member of this board. For 10 years...
Well, just for the clarity, Alan Germain is not a member of the select board.
Oh, okay. Well, he's on the finance...
He's on a couple of different boards in town, yeah.
So for 10 years, they had been fighting a drainage problem from Edenville into their property. And the town, I believe, took over and filled his whole area with sand because the runoff was coming into his land and then into mine. So for the last two years, he's been building this runoff from the water that's coming over to Edenville because the drainage in the street can't handle it. He's filled his property with sand, and the attendants are here, and they can attest for that, who also live next to us. And now all the water is going into my property because there's nowhere for the water to go. And this is before you're gonna put 300 or 333 housing units across the street. We can't even handle the water that is there now, even while Edenville was closed. How are we gonna deal with the water situation?
Good point. Thank you. All right. So, ma'am?
My name's Brenda. I live in North Carver. So I don't, I have a couple of questions. From his slides, it says, "We really don't have a choice." So my question is, we're doing, say, what was it? 85 units out of the 300. Who's maintained the application process? Who do we know is applying that are really in that 40B-friendly versus low-income? Who's the management company? Do we have any say in that? Do we work with them? Do we find out how many of these units are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? And that goes back to the application process? Are they single people? Are they single parents? Are they couples? Do we have any say in any of that? Or do we at least have information coming at us so that way we'll know it's coming, what we have to deal with? Because apparently, when the schools were built, they was spilt to what we have in school right now versus what could be coming. So is there any way we can have those figures and work with a management company, figure out who's coming and when they're coming? And to the other person's point, if they're empty units, now they're getting vouchers, and we will get low-income housing, which is fine. But how do we know what's coming down the pipe to protect us when it's coming?
Excellent thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dan Farini, 84 Fosdick Road. I have a couple of questions for the board. Will the select board allow the property to be taken by eminent domain, as was the case in North Carver for this project?
Again, this is, we're just listening to your thoughts.
Because North Carver, you took the farms. You took the land.
No. What project in North Carver?
North Carver, over behind, where it's contaminated now, where they've walked away.
The old Whitworth project?
Yes.
The town didn't take anything by eminent domain?
They allowed the project to take the...
I don't believe we took anything by eminent domain.
Yes, you did, because we came to this town meeting and fought it.
Okay.
Okay. My other question. Has anyone in town or within Town Hall met with the Edenville group yet and spoken to them?
They had that one presentation.
Has anyone from the Town Hall, past that presentation, spoken with the group and met with that group? I'm just, question.
Not this board.
We had a site visit.
Yeah, we had a site visit.
No, but they were, I was just asking if other individuals who work within Town...
No. No one who works for the Town.
All right, again, we're just here to hear your thoughts, Mr. Farini. That's what we hear.
I have been hearing that people from within Town Hall have been meeting with the team there.
No, there are no Town employees who work for Edenville.
I will not bring any names, but I've been given names of who had been meeting there.
And in fact, if I may, Mr. Chair, one of our select board members works for Edenville, and you'll notice he recused himself.
It is not his name. It is other names.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Glenya Mocley, 218 Tremont Street. I have a little different view, maybe, than some people, but this is not a place to put 40B housing. I know Edenville quite well, and I knew the Atwood family. And believe me, Ellis and Elthea are rolling over in their graves. And that's only if they're feeling good about this, because I'm sure they haven't felt good about any of this lately. When they came before you, there were traffic records that were not very useful that were presented. COVID is still impacting Edenville and other daily traffic. A more accurate indication of traffic would be the last 10 years of ticket sales broken down on a weekly average. Those things that they did, they're meaningless. My best guess and practical experience tells me that King Richard's Fair is far more traffic. Also, please note that when we say we're not gonna use Edenville during King Richard's Fair, of course you're not, because Edenville parking lot is going to bus people from the fair and over to the fair to prevent families with young children from walking down Route 58. Not a place I'd want to be walking. If any of you want to go, go ahead. That's a potential nightmare. That's a safety hazard, among other things. The chances of a revamped Edenville will never come close to the crowds of decades ago. It's very slim. I know I was the head ticket seller there for a number of years. Just the thought of all this is ridiculous. People go to ride the train, see the displays, and get into the Christmas spirit. A group of salespeople set up around the area is nothing but a sales situation. You can go to churches. You can go to schools, craft places. With heat. No bad weather. Adequate parking. Much shorter walk. Thomas the Train Tanked, we all know that. This was not set up for anything except for trains, cranberries, the antique carousel, a historic way of life, and that's what we're looking for. I know Thomas left town. Thomas never ought to have come to town. I saw the original plans when they're being proposed, and they were horror then. Decades ago, when the rolling stock headed to Maine, that was devastating. Edenville was family-created and oriented and gave us an honest view of a small portion of our history. It is unlikely that the rail bus from all over the world, and I know, because I knew a lot of them. Some of them even came and stayed at my mother's house. We know. Even children, they're not gonna come for that, but even children know the difference between real fun and sales. The spirit of the season is more than selling, selling, selling. Unfortunately, the area has lost a lot of its natural charm. The pond where the Indian encampment was, it's gone. No more lumberjacks doing log rolling, gone. No living native history, gone. The parking lot where the 40B housing is intended to go has wetlands all around it. I was informed tonight that it doesn't. But I know I was there, and I've seen it, and I walked on where those bogs were. The traffic, well, has anyone yet told the town in Middleborough about this? Because Pine, East, and Beach Streets probably won't be very pleasant for the residents. When they, you get to the end of Rochester Road, people are gonna have to make a decision. I can remember being in the car with my parents and us going to the end of Rochester Road over the bridge. And I kid you not, Reverend Von Dehide, which probably no one here knows who he ever was, was out there directing traffic because it was so bad. It was from Edenville. It was terrible.
Ms. Mopple, I do have to ask you to finish.
I have one more sentence, and then I'm done.
Okay.
If I can just get through this. Oh, don't give up. You know downright where you're interested. They haven't heard this perspective, I don't think. And if you're not, there's something wrong with you. Already, the sand mining is impacting the people in Middleborough, as well as all the people in Carver and six other towns. So we don't need to impose this upon our neighbors, even upon ourselves, because there's too much impact to property, environment. And now, this project, this is a grab for money. Not to benefit the Town.
Thank you, Ms. Mopple. Anyone else? Sure?
Do I have to push the button here, or...?
Nope.
Okay. First, thank you, Sarah, for clarifying on whether or not we really have...
So if you could just give us your name and address for the project.
Sure. 19 Miles Sanders Drive, Timbean. Thank you, Sarah, for clarifying that we don't really have an option, it sounds like, for the first 200 units. Whether they're 40B loan, none of that really matters to me. It's just that there's 200 or 330 houses that will be introduced to the Town. So we moved here about nine, 10 years ago. I have a young family. And we came from Kingston, which was radically developed as I grew up, and the town completely changed. They had their own issues, town water, town sewer. And I've just seen over the last nine or 10 years, things start to build up. And I understand there's a need for progress, but especially in an area that's right next to a mass fish and wildlife area with the Atwood Reserve and the swamp that's there, and the water that's there, and the main pipeline that it probably allows a lot of your wildlife down and through the center of town into the state forest. And I understand that you said 25 feet that can be from those areas.
That's what the state allows.
So one of the questions I might have for the select board then, or maybe suggestion is to work with mass fish and wildlife to also see if you could get some sort of a wildlife study to see what kind of impact, you know, 300 units or anything that we couldn't do, especially with some of the wildlife we have in the areas, any issues with the aquifers themselves here in Carver, which I'm sure, you know, are a multitude of issues, but sticking wastewater and everything else in the center of the town around... town around areas that one, purify the water, but also where the water stands is probably going to be a severe issue. And then even just from a trash standpoint or anything along those lines, you know, we see the difference when Edoville's running or anything else. Our DPW does the best they can, but there's almost only so much you can do when you get a few hundred cars more in town. Like I said, forty-B loan doesn't matter to me. The plan that, you know, was set forth that the gentleman showed us, you know, keep it in our commercial areas. I know we don't have much of a say, but, you know, hopefully we can investigate the environmental aspects of it as well. Because that's a big, that's like all the rivers and everything else kind of interconnected and then it's always going to work its way over to the swamp by South Meadow and those areas too. That's all I have to add. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
How are you doing?
Welcome.
My name's Kevin Bazanson, Tremont Street, Carver. My biggest concern, because it looks like it's going to happen either way, we don't have much of a say, is what are we going to do about the schools? I moved here because it's a small town and I wanted my children to have a good education and the attention they need with smaller classroom numbers. So if we're going to have three-hundred-and-forty-four units, you know, how many children is that going to be? Is that going to be another hundred kids that we have to put into the school, transport, you know? So that's more bus drivers, more teachers, more police, more fire. That's a strain, which ups our taxes, which I think we already paid too much. So now they're going to go up again and I just don't think it's good for the town. But if it's going to go through, you know, let's at least try for the two hundred. But you have to figure out a plan for the teaching, for the policing, for the fire, ambulance, you know, plus traffic. King Richard's Fair is terrible, the traffic is awful. So now you're going to add, you know, two-hundred-plus cars to get through there on the weekends when the fair is going on? It's going to be really bad, so.
Sounds... Thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My husband and I, we moved, when we moved back to Massachusetts from Kentucky in two thousand and fourteen, we chose Carver because it's rural. We like the feel of the town the way it is. We also are very concerned, as a lot of people have mentioned, about our taxes going up with the added fire, police, school. And I think that a lot of people in town are already struggling with taxes. And when you add the burden of all of that, then when we also add the burden of all of these vehicles and more DPW issues and just all of that, it changes the town. And it's not what we came here for. I don't want to live in Hyannis and I just don't. And I really, really, really think that we need to... Everybody keeps saying that we can't do anything about this. And I just find that really hard to believe that they can force us to put a complex like this in an area like this. I mean, this just isn't it. We don't have town water, we don't have town septic. How is it possible that we don't have any recourse to put this in an area of the town or do, you know, that's better suited for it or do single units or duplexes, something like that? Why do we have to have three-story apartment complex? I just, I just really, really hope that as the people we have elected to represent us, that you guys can do something to find a way to not put this in this location. Because again, everybody here is here for that reason and I think everybody agrees that this just isn't the place for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think I saw it right back there. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Angley and I live at two-fifty-two Tremont Street. And I have to echo this lost person's sentiment here. I agree. I'm a real estate agent, have been for a long time. I'm a business owner here in town and I have to agree. I'm appalled that we're just going to roll over on this. I'm appalled that all I've heard is that we have to take these houses, that we have to take the two-hundred units, that we have to take the three-hundred-and-fifty units, whatever it is. I don't want one, and I'm a real estate agent here in town. I don't want one unit. I moved here for my children, this school, the school that's already busting at capacity. That's what I moved here for. I moved here for a small town. Moved here because my family was here. I moved here because I love this town so much. And I'm just appalled that you would even, not even fight for us and not even fight, not even look for the, look for some answers. How about traffic studies? Start there. Start with our traffic studies. That area cannot handle it. We cannot handle it. Our town is already busting at the seams. We don't, we don't have the police, we don't have the schools. I came here because I love the fact that my daughters were going to go to school, elementary, middle school, high school, all in one school. I came from Plymouth. We have ninety-seven schools over there, whatever it is. I want you to take a look at what is happening around towns all over. I see it as a real estate agent constantly. And the fact that this man can sit here and tell you how to do your jobs makes me sick. Why don't you find a way? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angley.
One more thing, one more thing, sorry. I will fight this tooth and nail. And I think I have a lot of people behind me who will. A lot of people have been very pleasant with you. I will not be. I will fight this. I will chain myself down there if I have to. I don't care. And I have a whole town behind me right now that I think echo my sentiments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I definitely can't back that, but Jesse Bonsec, I live off of Bunny's Road. I just wanted to follow up the Plymouth thing too. I'm a Plymouth-born and raised native. I did move here with my wife and I have a two-month-old son to kind of have that quaint town perspective and I see it fading. So I don't really have much to say. I don't, I'm not really good at public speaking, but I just want it to be known that, you know, we're not trees. People have options, I think, with equity and stuff like that. So if people want to move, they will. And I think taking that draw away from such a beautiful town, one of the few that's left, is a sad thing. So I think that's something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we do need to move this along. I think I saw a lady back there. I, I'm sorry, right, I can see your hand, at least it was up. Would you like to, would you like to speak?
Do you?
Ma'am? I thought, maybe I was mistaken.
Are you talking to me?
No, right in the middle back there, no? Must have been mistaken. Sir, all right. We'll finish up with you. Thank you. Was this... Oh, I didn't see your hand. After this gentleman, we'll end with you.
Steve Dollmuse, ten Mayflower Road.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your name.
Steve Dollmuse, Mayflower Road. So I would, I'd speak to like everyone else is saying, the schools, my two young children, and I can definitely speak to the traffic. King Richard's Fair, I can't even leave my driveway when it's open. I have to call the police. They put do not enter signs on the road. People don't care. People just go around them. And if you live over by Edoville, you'll be stuck in your house and not get out. It sucks. So a traffic plan would be great if it has to go into town, but I'm with everyone else. I don't want this in my town, so let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Ryan, three Presidents Way. I happen to own a small real estate company in Quincy and my background is in rentals. And I will tell you, right now, the luxury market is taking a nosedive. I can't believe the rents that we get in Quincy are comparable to the rents we get, that you people get in Carver. Absolutely makes no sense to me. But I heard Mr. Bart talking about these rents. You're not going to see these rents in a year or two, you're not. There's a luxury building over at Habewalk in Plymouth and they are charging, the rents are up there. The police are over there. I could not tell you how many times a week. They've got problems over there and they've got forty-B housing there. So I'm just giving you a little preview. You can move in there and get eight weeks free rent. What that's telling me is they're not able to rent these apartments. So if Mr., if John Delly puts up these buildings, these apartments, what happens if he can't rent them? Where does this go from here? Where it goes is Section eight. That's just where it goes. Thank you.
All right, I want to thank you all for attending.
I have a question, if I could, please. I'll make it quick.
Mrs. Lappam from Main Street, Carver. I just kind of was curious in my own mind, so if, what is the allotment that the state says we have to be, to have, to make their forty-B agenda that the state's looking for? Just, is it three-fifty is what they're looking for?
Two-hundred and eleven.
All right, so if, when we need that by the 2024?
No, that's in order to make our affordable housing limit so that we can, we can tell the rest of the forty-B projects.
Say in six months, another developer comes in, buys another lot of land and he wants to throw up a hundred units.
Well, if we've already met our limit and we have our, we're at ten percent affordable housing, we can say no to the next guy.
That's not two hundred, though. That's more than two hundred.
That's right, that is not two hundred, you're right.
So another person comes in, buys up a lot of land, thinking I'm going to build some houses and we're going to say, no, you can't because we already have, we have Mr. Piscari got his whole pie, the piece of the pie?
No, if he got, if he built three-hundred-and-forty-four units, which he's not proposing, he's proposing three-hundred-and-thirty-six.
Right.
Three-hundred-and-forty-four would get us to ten percent. I misunderstood your question. The two-hundred won't, but it certainly will be a lot fewer children in school.
So but there again, if another developer comes into town and wants to buy a piece of land...
Correct.
Isn't, isn't there a developer that owns the South Meadow product, project that also is affiliated with the Silver Street project? Is it, doesn't he have like, he's got forty, seventy-four units or eighty-four units or something proposed eventually to do over there? Does he become part of that forty-B pie? Because I thought that that's what he talked about. So do we end up saying, oh, no, sorry, you can't do that either now?
Well, we can only say, and I would like to correct the misconception, if I may, Mr. Chair, that we somehow are rolling over. The forty-B is a state law.
I totally understand that.
It's mass general law, chapter forty, section B.
But if we don't need it done this year, I don't, why are we looking at one whole project for one person?
No, but the problem is that we either do the friendly one and get more units, more kids, more traffic, or we...
Do you even hear what you just said? More, more, more? We don't think, where do we accommodate these more?
That's right, I understand that. Or we...
In one area? Why couldn't it be this one developer gets a set amount and the next developer, the next developer...
Well, if I could just finish, you asked me a question. So we could either do the friendly one, get more, 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 all this stuff that everyone's talking about services, or he can do the two-hundred. But we can't just tell him, no, sorry, we don't, you can't do any of it. It's state law.
I totally get that. It's his land, it's his property, but I don't understand why one person gets that whole piece of the pie regardless of what? If it's, if it's a, if it's a state number that we're trying to reach at a certain amount of time? Because there again, I mentioned it, there's something that's going to happen over on Silver Street in the near future. We already know that.
Well, it's not like we asked him for these numbers.
Oh, I know, I know. But our board has the right to say yes or no on certain things too. And we're just hoping that our board is listening to, you know that all congestion down there period to begin with. We're going to go in and, are we going to go in and we're going to widen that whole road for that type of traffic?
That would be a ZBA if they could put a condition on it. That's not...
Yeah, if I could, I think we're getting a little off topic here.
Well, she did ask the question.
I understand, but we're talking about different developments now.
Well, because it's part of the town and I get that we're, I'm just putting it out there for us to all keep in our minds because some people out here might not realize there's still another project that's going to come down the pipe too.
I understand, but it's not on tonight's agenda and there could be people who live on Silver Street that, if that was on the agenda, they may want to attend. So that's why...
This is part of my question and discussion. So the next thing would be, again, why can't there be some change in modifications in the fifty-five and older community and let them be included in these figures? And then there again, if there's somebody that owes an astronomical amount of taxes in this town, and I don't know that for sure, I'm not going to swear to it, but why would we even entertain anything until those taxes were up to date? Because nobody'd think twice about coming and taking my house if I was behind on taxes, so.
All right, we also have public safety folks here this evening. Would any of you like to come up and discuss your concerns with the, with the board, before the board? Has a, has a discussion? And again, we appreciate you being here as well.
Take John's. He stepped out.
So thank you for being here this evening.
Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Craig Weston, I'm obviously a fire chief, welcome tonight. So obviously the three public safety chiefs are here tonight and our plan is to obviously to address the board on impacts, you know, of a potential forty-B. And I'm speaking specifically for the fire department and the other chiefs can speak to their disciplines. So I have six key points I'd like to kind of make tonight so that the board understands our concerns, okay? So number one is, any facility that's built there, we would want to ensure that the buildings are fully sprinkled. Until a plan is submitted, we don't know that for certain, so that's just an assumption on this part. We have real concerns on the height of the buildings combined with the large occupant load presents a severe public safety issue for the fire department. CFD, which is our fire department, does not have sufficient apparatus to handle an immediate or significant fire emergency within the seven-building complex as presented. Carver Fire does not have an aerial tower apparatus in our response fleet and currently only utilizes ground ladders carried on our frontline engines. Ground ladders are not sufficient for rescues or fire mitigation due to the building's height that's proposed and the large number of people that would be there. When you do the math, forty-two units per building, that's three to four people per unit, that potentially equates to a hundred and fifty to two-hundred people in need of a rescue or evacuation in one building at a time. Every emergency is different and a lot of what I speak to is probably the one percent of the calls, but in our department, we plan for a hundred percent of things. Again, currently we do not have an aerial tower apparatus in our response fleet, allowing us to make these rescues and reach the roof in order to keep the fire from spreading to the adjacent units. With buildings of increased height, size and occupant load, the fire department would need to have a safe exterior access to the roof for firefighters to secure mechanicals, extinguish vented, extinguish vented fires, perform ventilation operations and make rescues if needed. Even if the high occupant, with the high occupant load, even if the building height was reduced to two stories plus the attics, we would still require an aerial apparatus to mitigate fires, perform rescues and to keep our firefighters safe. Bottom line, your fire department would have to have an NFPA-approved aerial tower apparatus to safely allow us to do our jobs and we do not have that. Item three is proper incident collapse zone. One of the things we always look at in any plan that is reviewed is, there's an NFPA guideline that we follow that we try to maintain one and a half type, one and a half times the height of the building as a collapse zone to safely operate our fire apparatus and our firefighters. We will be very mindful of this as the plans, if any plans were developed. A very big concern of ours is the lack of reliable water source for a large-scale fire at the complex. Water supplies for firefighting in the area of the proposed project are very seasonal and weather-dependent. Not having a municipal water system in that area for firefighting means we have to rely on additional water sources in close proximity. They have to have large, reliable, known quantities to extinguish fires of large scale. Those do not exist there. I'm not saying they can't be developed there, they do not exist there now. We also... We also look at roadway widths. As plans are developed, we'll be very mindful of the size of the roads around the buildings and around the complex to make sure our fire apparatus can safely work in those areas. Another issue is the impact of calls for assistance on our department. Adding 200 to 300-plus units, which I think we all know, brings about 800 to 1,200 people. And you can all have your own figures of how you calculate that. That will definitely increase the calls for assistance to our fire department. These calls will range from smoke detector activations, CO incidents, cooking incidents, odd smells and bells, we call them, fire incidents, large and small. Over time, these additional calls will definitely have a negative impact on our call firefighting system. It might not be tomorrow, it might not be in a month, but it will have an effect. Those are my comments from the fire department. I certainly let the other chiefs speak.
Thank you.
Mike Ryan, Chief of the EMS Department. The biggest issue for our department, of course, would be the potential increase for call volume. Currently, we average above one call for every six residents in town. That's our, our latest figures from calendar year 2022. So an increase of up to 1,000 residents or higher is approximately an increase of anywhere from 160 to 170 calls a year. Increased call volume would result in a financial impact for us for disposable equipment use, wear and tear on non-disposable equipment, increased technology costs for ambulance reporting and such, and of course, the increased cost for salary that would come with having to have the additional crews. Currently, we staff one ambulance, the second ambulance is staffed by callback. So that, second ambulance would most likely be a little bit more busy than it is now. So that would have an increased cost there. Also, with that increased call volume, it could also impact the staff negatively where we do depend so much on our in-town staff to respond off-duty to calls for service. If we saw a large increase, we already have a significant increase because our call volume's high. If we were to see that increase even more, it might make it more difficult to get staff to come in off-shift when they're at home because they won't have a lot of downtime. And it may increase the need for us to staff more heavily, which of course would increase the cost of salaries for running the department. So those are really the biggest concerns that we have with the EMS department is just the impact on the number of calls that we could potentially get from having that influx of residents and, you know, people living, not just visiting the town, but actually living in the town.
Thank you. Chief Doofly?
Thank you for having me. Thanks for everybody being here tonight. So we just talked about, the two of the chiefs talked about the increase in people and how that will impact their departments, and I am here to say the same thing. Your police department currently operates with 17 police officers. Back in 2018, we did, we hired a company to prepare a strategic plan for the department. And we looked at what number of police officers does the town need? There's a FBI statement that says in the Northeast, the number should be 1.9 police officers to every 1,000 residents. We don't have that. We, we also looked at the level of the number of calls coming into the department, as Chief Ryan mentioned. So we, we, back then, put together a chart showing when we got to about 15,000 calls per year, we'd need between 20 and 22 police officers. Again, we're currently at 17. We've just worked with the, with the town to prepare a budget to hire one more. We're hoping to hire another one next year, that would bring us to 19. But if you use those numbers, if you say we have an average of the past three years of 16,000 calls that those police officers responded to. We developed a metric to look at what is the total number of calls per officer per year that would keep us at a level of service that the town wanted. And we determined that number to be somewhere between 720 and 740 calls per year per officer. If you divide 16,000 by the current 11,500, already to come up to about 1.4 per resident. Not every resident's going to have 1.4 calls to the police department, but that's all cumulative, everything we do every year between domestics and motor vehicle accidents and traffic stops and records requests, everything that that department does is encompassed in those numbers. If we increase the residents, as the, as the fire chief mentioned, between 800 and 1,200, so let's say 1,000, times at 1.4, we're looking at another 1,400 calls per year on average. That is including domestics at the, at the place or car accidents or traffic issues that come from that. And that would be, if we're following the metrics in that chart, two more, two more police officers would be necessary on top of what we already have. And as I mentioned, we're already still behind. So that would be in addition to getting, you know, up to, we'd have to probably have about 22 officers. We're not there yet, but it would definitely, the impact would definitely increase the number of police officers you need to respond to calls in this town to keep the level of service just where it is now. And we don't, we, you know, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you what types of calls we'd be responding to there, but we certainly would be increasing the number of calls as we increase the population of the town. So it certainly would have an impact on, on the police department. And I think, as my colleagues mentioned, as on all public safety in the town.
Okay. Just, just one follow-up myself. And again, my comments and probably the rest of the chief's comments are, they're really the same for whether it's 200 units or 300 people, for a friendly B or non-friendly B. We have the same impacts, okay? You know, obviously you can scale them to some degree, but there are the same concerns.
Yes, I agree with this one.
All right. Before I turn it over to the board, just Chief Weston, just one quick question for you, just based on what you said. So whether it's a two-story building or a three-story building, we still need additional equipment to deal with those?
I feel strongly that you do. When you get that type of occupant, you have to imagine there's 42 units proposed per building, okay? That's, that's, that's just 14, 14 units per floor times three or four people. You know, just because Unit A is having a, a cooking incident or let's just say they're having a fire, that affects the rest of the units. And those units don't know what the problem is. They just know there's smoke in their apartment or smoke in the hallway. That, that develops a concern of the massive evacuations or rescues or however that, that incident evolves. So again, it's, it's height of a building, but it also has to do with the occupant load. And that's far different than just having two duplexes side by side in a common home. You know, we can tend to handle those types of emergencies. But when you put that many people in one area requiring all the types, the same services at once, it's impossible to fairly think that you can go in there and protect those residents at that time. And, you know, certain pieces of apparatus can help that and, and you can make life-saving efforts. We don't have that. And that's not to scare anyone in this town that their town, their home isn't protected because it certainly is. This is a totally different, you know, complex.
Could I add to that, though? While we're, while we're talking about that, if a situation like that, the three of us, the three of our departments work hand in hand. So a situation like that would involve all three of our departments. It would tax the police department to everyone we had, which would, which is okay because we'd have to rely on mutual aid, but would mean we have no, no other police officers to respond to anything else that's happening in town at that time. We'd have to bring people in other offices in on overtime or people, offices in from other departments to help out. So a situation like that, like you mentioned, a house fire is a house fire. We can handle that. A big fire in a big building like that is going to tax all our resources for the entire time the event goes on, so.
Thank you. Questions from the board? No? No? Yeah, no, we, we've already had the citizens' participation portion. Now, we're gonna, we.
I understand, but my question is basically, I didn't have one, I kind of agreed with everybody here. But now that I've heard them speak, I'd like to just have a comment on that particular, with my opinion.
No, I'm sorry, but we've already moved past the citizens' portion and we're gonna, we're gonna move forth, we're gonna move forward now. That, we may have more discussions further down the line, but for now, we need to, we need to move this along, I think. Mr. Fenn.
I was just going to ask Chief Weston, what was the number you came up with that you were assuming was going to be the maximum occupancy for, per building?
I just went by the numbers that were provided, you know, looking at 45 units, I think it was, per floor.
Something like that, yeah.
If there was three to four people, three times 45 and four times 45 per unit, it's just, I don't know.
For the three, for the three-bedroom?
Yeah, for the three-bedroom, the two-bedroom.
And then how many did you come up with for the one-bedroom?
I'm not privileged to know which, which one's a which.
Oh, it's on the plan?
I really don't know.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I thought you, I thought you said something like 1,000. Was that what you said?
Well, I just had a ra, I had a range.
Okay, that's all I was. Thank you.
Maybe it's 500 to 1,000.
No, that's okay. I just went.
It's not four.
Right.
Mr. Hoffman, did you have something?
Yep.
I thought I had your hand up. But Mr. Fanci, do you have anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you, folks, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Discussion from the board. What are your thoughts?
Okay, well, I'll go first. My thoughts are not going to be well-organized because if any of you came up here, you'd see I did a lot of research, though this desk is a mess. I've got stuff all over the place.
Okay, Ms. Bogga, if you could just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Yeah, okay. So my papers are everywhere. I think I want to start out by saying that, in my opinion, this site is not appropriate for the proposed project. And like I said, in, in my research of doing this, the, the term friendly really bothered me. Friendly 40B. It put the pressure on us. We're unfriendly. Us, the town, but like specifically us, we're in these seats right now. I didn't like thinking that I was going to be considered unfriendly if I didn't say I was okay with the 300 and some odd units. Because again, that's like 68% more than the 200. But I would be considered unfriendly if I said I was okay with 210 because it's not what the project is asking for. So it's if we said, if we said we were okay with anything other than this, we're being considered unfriendly, and I didn't like that. So if you want to cut me off because I'm hitting my three minutes at some point mark, but again, in my.
Go for it, Jen.
In my re, so I found this description of friendly because I was trying to be prepared. So the zoning board of appeals' formal public hearings are the official start of a local review of the 40B project. But prior to appearing before the ZBA, a developer must receive project eligibility from the state. Before issuing such approval, the state agencies involved will seek comment from the municipality. In anticipation of those comments, developers will often seek preliminary agreement for the project from the Board of Selectmen in order to put forth to the state what is known as a friendly B, a project that has local support. And then there was so much talk about, we have to take the 200. We, as a board and a town extending to the ZBA, don't have to automatically say yes to the 200 either because of that first step. If we, if we right now didn't say, "We're okay with that, let's do a 40, let's do a friendly 40B," then the project would seek eligibility from the state. And then when that happens, the town is given 30 days, a 30-day comment period where the select board, the planning board, everyone can comment. In other towns, I saw residents sent in comments. And then all those boards of people send in what are called comment letters to the state in taking the project into consideration. From my research, it seemed the state kind of said, "Too bad" to the comment letters, "We're going to let them do it anyway." So there's not great results, but it doesn't mean that we can't try to do something. I have.
The community's just asking you to try.
I have more details of why, of what communities tried to say in their comment letters to say that the, the project eligibility letter should not be given. And then I have examples of why the state said, "Sorry, too bad." But I came across this letter that Norwell sent to the governor in 2008, and it resonated with me. And again, cut me off, but this is part of the letter. It said, "We in Norwell are under siege by ravenous, unscrupulous developers who are not interested in building affordable housing projects, but rather are looking to cash in on the quiet reputation of a community and who propose projects that are so oversized and completely inim, I don't know, inimical, inimical?" Well, it printed with like two words next to each other. It printed funky. "To the neighborhoods in which they have been proposed that they would destroy the very community character that attracted them in the first place. 40B in the hands of an unelected, uncaring, pro-developer bureaucratic agency is destroying the fabric of our communities. The uniqueness of each community in the Commonwealth that makes our state such an attractive and varied place to live is being replaced with a mad rush to remake every community in the same image, local control and zoning be excluded. You are forcing us to spend scarce resources to sue you to defend ourselves from you. Money that could be going to schools, police, fire, DPW, and other budgets is instead going to lawyers who are defending a community's right to determine its own destiny, a right that is guaranteed us in our state constitution." And as I read that, I was like, yeah, wow, who said wow? It was wow. And, and a lot of the stuff that was said tonight, I, I felt the, the increase in schools and that stuff. But unfortunately, in the research, the state seems to say, "We don't care about that, that you have to be, you know, you have to deal with it." Because in Southborough, or no, here's Redding. Redding had gotten a 40B in front of them and they actually had, the town sent two comment letters to Mass Housing about the, this project at 20 Elm Street. And one of their concerns was, and one of their environmental concerns was water quality. And it said, "It is the town's opinion that it is less-than-ideal land use planning to encourage intense house development where there are no municipal sewers and new housing projects must rely on private treatment systems with subservice discharge." Again, bear with me.
Take it back.
And then in, in Southborough, I'm, there might be, I might be coming back to towns, but in Southborough, there was another project there that Mass Housing responded to. And after their 30-day comment period, they took into account information received from the site visit they did and the written comments. And among other things, the things that I thought might be most kind of relatable to Carver that they judge on, this is them making their criteria-driven decision, is relationship to adjacent building types. What's being proposed down there does not fit in with the adjacent neighborhood. And this is one of their criteria. Another one is building massing, which talked about the, the facades and the roofing and stuff. And it, based on what they're proposing down there, going beyond the fact that, you know, giant apartment buildings don't fit in down there, the, the kind of style of what they're putting down there doesn't match the, the single-family homes that are down there that have existed forever, just doesn't fit in. Another one that they judge on is relationship to adjacent streets and integration into existing development patterns. The adjacent streets, in my opinion, can't handle that many more cars. They're crazy as is right now. And those roads getting there are actually part of the, the Carver bike route, which has been established forever that I spoke to you guys about, about using ARPA funds for. So the town has been making progress on that for a long time and we're moving, hopefully moving forward with it now. And adding that many more cars there is, is a huge danger, and they take that into consideration. Another one, environmental resources. This one got a lot of stars on my paper. Okay, so this was to the one in Southborough. It says, "It does not appear that any portion of the site is located within a flood zone or in an aquifer protection overlay district." So I interpreted this as they said it's, it's okay in Southborough So I interpreted this as they said it's, it's okay in Southborough because it's not in an aquifer protection overlay district. If I'm correct, Carver is an aquifer protected district.
The whole town.
So we would fit, you know, kind of opposing it on that regard. And then the topography too. The, the natural vegetation around it and the shape being irregular and stuff. And again, that's from, that's from the state's determination. So I really didn't find any information on when a town, a ZVA denied the, the project and the developer appealed. There was a huge percentage, almost all of them, the town overturned it and said, too bad. But-
Almost all the state overturned it?
Yes, the state. The state overturned the ZVA's decision and said, sorry. But based on this decision from the state, we have some standing with their criteria. You know, they don't say, we're sorry, you're getting more students. They don't, they don't care. It's not in their decision. But what's in their decision counts. So, I mean, I'll look through my other stuff while you guys are talking and I'll listen.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're, we're in board discussions right now.
But basically where I'm at is I, I don't think we should enter into a friendly 40B with the 330 units. But personally, I wouldn't support entering into one at all because I think that there are strong reasons we can stand on to not have it happen at all, so.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Jen.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Hewens?
So, so my question is, most, you know, the right way to say this. So the, we get two, we were told we have two options. Do we have a third option not to do anything? Okay, go ahead. Let me change that. Legally, do we have a third option?
Yes.
The third option is to do nothing.
Right.
And then it would be up to the developer to file the, the application to the state.
Okay, and then once it's-
And then it follows through that process for the 200.
Okay, and what Jen was talking about, if the 30-day comment period is that far the 200 as well? Or is that only if we-
Yeah, it's an all A40Bs.
That would be for whatever he applies for.
Okay, so once he applies?
That's the project that goes before the state. So if he applies for the 200, that's what comes to the town to know what's coming. If he applies for the 334, that's what comes to the town too. So.
So, so either way, whether we decide to enter into a discussion for the friendly, the unfriendly or don't do anything, there's still a 30-day comment period that we can hopefully comment and change the state's thinking.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, because I, because again, everybody, there's so much missing, not, different information out there that it's either, it's, it's a done deal. The minimum amount is going to be 200 or it's 336. So there is a, there is a possibility that could be zero.
Very slim.
All right, it's a slim possibility, but it's a slim possibility, but we as a board have to listen to what the people that voted us in and those that didn't vote for us too, but that's beside the point. No, seriously, but we have to take everything into consideration and just see what all our options are. And that's, I just want to make sure what all of our options are because again, I personally only make decisions on what information I'm giving to me, but I want to make sure I'm given all the options before I make any decision. So again, if you hear, you know, had different questions and that's why I'm asking some of these other questions I asked earlier, I want to make sure everything.
So if I may, so what you'd be talking about and doing tonight, if you're so pleased, is to decide whether to vote to have me and whomever becomes the small team negotiate for the friendly 40B and get some mitigation out of that. Might be a lot of truck, who knows? That, those are the, what you're weighing out. Or to, to not enter into a 40B and just let it go as a, if they file, it'll be a straight 40B. But then it's up to the developer whether they file under that. Obviously, they came before us here to say that they were looking for a friendly 40B to get more units. So, so it's up to, it's up to you whether that goes forward that way or you just let it, let it, let it slide and see if they file. And then that kicks in the whole process of 30 days and so forth.
So, so again, we, we ask for, if say that we approve the friendly, always we recommend the friendly.
Well, again, we wouldn't be recommending anything. All we would be doing is, is seeing if we can get some, some mitigation. That's all we would be, we'd be doing.
That would be for the, for the 336?
Well, or whatever, I mean, part, part of the mitigation could be the number. That could be, that could be part of the discussion. But I, I think everything is, is a discussion.
So, so basically if, let's say we're, we're against it, the whole project altogether. The developer can still go file his plan with the state and then we can comment or appeal to the state. And the state-
We, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fennessey. Once the developer files with the state, there's no opportunity to go back and, and try to mitigate that. That, that is the plan, correct?
Yeah, unless they pull it out and then start all over. If there's an interest to mitigate.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
So let's say pull out their, their application from the state and then start over. Say, say the board changes.
Okay.
And, and there's now, and, and nothing's been done by the developer. And now there's a, there's an interest in the board, the new board of going forward with a friendly 40B. Development can pull out their application for the original 40B if it hasn't gone that, you know, forward. And then get into negotiations. I wouldn't suggest that. I think, I think what you want to do here is, is come to some conclusion.
Here's my biggest concern based on what we heard tonight. I think, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we all agree that the area proposed for the 40B is not a, a, an area that we feel comfortable, that we don't think it should go there. I think we all feel that the road isn't, you know, the type of road that could handle the additional traffic. I don't even think there's enough parking for the, for the number of tenants to talk about or the number of cars are gonna be there. But, and all those things are, are important and, and the school, everything. But we, we heard our public safety officials talk about the challenges to just the, the public safety situation, especially the, the fire chief. And I, I think that's a real argument that we could make to the, to the state. That it's a, the public safety challenges are such that, you know, that's a real concern down there. And I, I mean, they may not care about, they may tell you, well, we don't care if you're not approved on your school. You gotta, you find room for these kids. Or we don't care if the road can handle the traffic. But I, I hope they care about public safety. And to me, that's, that's the biggest challenge with the whole, that whole thing. So that's, those are just my thoughts and Ms. Hewens?
Thanks. So there are so many issues here. I, I'm just going to go through one that I spent a little bit of time with and then I want to direct some questions to Mr. Fennessey that some of the people brought up when I'm finished. So, so just, just so you all know, what's being proposed right now are 182 one-bedroom units, 119 two-bedroom units and 35 three-bedroom. So that's 336 units. I did a little homework too and looked up under the National Association of Home Builders. The, the most reason I could find is probably a little bit out of date. Says that for, for this type of project, as opposed to single-family homes or manufactured homes, for example, or condominiums, the number of children per unit on average in the U.S. for one bedroom is .077. For two bedrooms, .314. For three bedrooms, .716. So that comes out to basically, where's my number? 99 children for the friendly and 59 children for the unfriendly. So now that's prob- as I said, that's probably an underestimate. I suspect Chief Weston's is more accurate. So this, this is like the, the best scenario, if you will. Even so, with the unfriendly, the in, in, the total in-school, in-district expenditure per pupil times the number of children is the total increase of education cost for the friendly is 1.2 million. For the unfriendly, it's 700,000 and change. And that would increase the cost to residents just for additional students. For the friendly one of $288,000 and, and change. Obviously, it's less for the unfriendly. I agree with Jen and, and Mark and Jim. I think that there are too, there is too much at stake here, especially our aquifer. It covers the whole town. It's extremely important resource that we have. And I think there's a, I don't know if there's a chance, but I think that maybe we should take the chance. Just, just do nothing and then when it comes to the review period, just let them have it, basically. And so I did want to ask Mr. Fennessey, I don't know if you know all the answers, but Mrs. Ferrand asked, was there a way we could make this an over 55?
That's up to the developer. It's not something we can control.
Just wanted that clear.
And my gut is that it's more beneficial financially to not have that.
For the developer.
For the developer, yep.
More beneficial for us if it were that.
It would be, yes, yes.
Mrs. Dormer asked, said that this was going to become an Algonquin Heights. Is that a potential if the units don't get sold?
That they can use for section eight? Yeah, not the, not the units that are set aside. Well, maybe it could, those two. But they can use, the rest of them, they have, they can, they don't have to use the market value. They can use whatever they want for those units not controlled by the 40B.
Okay.
So whatever that plays out to, you know.
Okay. Mr. Burns asked if we could buy Edoville and build our own 40B? Is that within the realm of possibility?
Well, if, if Edoville wanted to sell for a low price. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, the town is not in, in the, in the business of developing massive housing like that. So it'd be difficult to do. But I don't know, I've never run into that.
So in short, we'd need a fair amount of money to do that.
Yes, yeah.
I, I just wanted to get these questions out there.
Well, it's a good idea.
It is, I thought it was a great idea. I don't know if Mr. Burns is still here, but it was a great idea. And, and someone else, I'm sorry, I don't remember who it was, said that someone was sitting here and telling us what to do. I'm not sure if, if she was referring to the town planner or the developer, but I don't think either one of them are telling us what to do. I spoke to the town planner today, who does in fact work for the town. And he told me, basically what he was going to present us was, was facts. He said, "You guys are the decision makers. These are the facts. I'm just trying to give you the facts." And I, I'm hoping that that's what has come across here. That we're all trying to get the facts here.
Trying to get the facts and we're trying to hear people's opinions, which is why we did this.
And get people's opinions, yes. So I, I am for keeping it the way it is down there and let's hope for the best.
So I think we're all in agreement here. Mr. Fennessey, would you advise that we take some kind of motion not to enter into discuss discussions or just take no action?
I would put it in the positive of, of not taking action, so that is clear.
Or not, not entering into negotiations?
Not entering into negotiations for 40B. Because that was a request of the developer.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we not enter into negotiations for a friendly 40B.
Sorry.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda this evening.
Where's John?
That's right, we should, we should bring John, bring John back. Thank you.
You want to take five?
Yes, let's take a five-minute recess. Good idea. All right. All right, we are back in order this evening. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the appointment of a new select board delegate to the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School Appointing Committee. Mr. Fennessey, who are the three delegates right now?
You, you are one.
Yeah, I know, I know I am.
Who are the other two?
I think, I think it might be myself, Ms. Hewens and Ms. Bogart. Do that, the Old Colony Regional School Committee Appointing Committee? Do you know?
It wasn't me.
It wasn't you?
No.
Well, I know I'm one.
You're on it.
And I, and I know I have resigned. My wife is now a member of the Old Colony Regional School Committee and I, I don't want any appearance of a conflict. So I have resigned from that. I just want to make sure we don't reappoint, don't appoint somebody new that's already on that committee.
So it is Mark Townsend, Sarah Hewens and Jennifer Bogart.
That's, that's what I thought.
But it doesn't happen very often.
No, it doesn't happen very often at all. But we do have two applicants right now for that committee, which needs to, means there need to be, there needs to be a new person on that committee. So Mr. Hoffman or Mr. Carter, would either one of you be interested in?
And this is just a nominating committee where you'll nominate somebody to sit on that board?
Yes, the town moderator calls the meeting and he informs me that that meeting can take place by Zoom if it needs to be. So.
And apparently it's not a huge thing because I didn't even remember being on it.
It doesn't happen very often, but uh-
But you did a good job, Jen.
We do need a third member. So don't, don't all, don't all fight over this now.
All right, get a coin, you're drunk.
Sure.
All right. All right.
Do we have a nominee?
Yes, yeah.
I'll nominate John Carter.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Carter, you willing to take that position?
I give you your confidence in my vote.
Thank you.
Wait, vote, all those in favor?
Yes, all those in favor of John Carter?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. John, I thought you might vote against it. All right.
And presumably they'll get in touch with us when-
Yes, yeah, there will be a meeting, I'm told relatively soon because we have two applicants right now for that, for that position, which is why this came up.
Okay.
So next, we have the review of, of several annual town meeting warrant articles. The first one is the cemetery perpetual care transfer.
Chair, Mr. Chair, so we're going to put that off till the next meeting to see where the funding is on that.
All right. All right, the next one is the North Carver Water District repayment to the town. You will all remember that we advanced the North Carver Water District some money from ARPA funds.
Yes.
To, to accelerate the repair of the problems up there.
Yes.
And now we need this article so that the water comes, the money comes back to the town. And you'll see that on the first page highlighted as in green.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? She's having a hard time hearing to take the notes with the people talking.
Oh, I'm sorry, folks, if you could, if you could just please keep your conversations down or, or please talk outside the door, okay? Thank you. All right. So back to the North Carver Water District.
Do we need to vote on this?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve article, that the article, North Carver Water District to repay the town the sum of $208,706.95.
And if I may, so the informational summary is going to be changed a little bit to, to reference the memorandum of agreement.
Okay.
That we have with them. So, but you're voting on the language of the article anyway.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, there's just a blank in the article, the town's blank account. What account is it going to go in? Just back to the ARPA funds or where? I don't know, there's a blank.
Yeah, and there's probably an account number that is set up for that, so.
Okay.
But we'll add the account number.
Because if we're voting on the language, we just need to know there's a blank.
So when, when I made the proposition that we lend that money to the North Carver Water District from ARPA, I explicitly asked that it go back to ARPA. So we still have the funding.
So say to the town's ARPA account.
Yep, cool.
And then it says out of the North Carver Water District blank account.
It's, it's their, their-
Is it usually their enterprise fund?
It probably is, where they keep all their money, yeah. Yeah. Put it in and if we need to amend it next meeting, we can.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Thank you. Next is the personal property exemption.
Mr. Chair, if I might, so I have a memo from Joe Roach, the town assessor. So that at the December 20th, 2022 meeting, the Board of Assessors voted to recommend a $1,000 personal property exemption is allowed by Master of Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54. This would mean that any personal property account with an assessed value of $1,000 or less would be exempted from an annual tax bill. As of FY '23, there are 115 personal property accounts that have value of 1,000 or less. The total value of these accounts for fiscal year 2020- The total value of these accounts for fiscal year 2023 is $57,110, which equates to $1,312.39 in tax dollars. The average value of these accounts is $497. The average bill is $11.41. The annual tax bills for these accounts range from adult 38 up to 2298. Adopting this article will not result in a loss of tax revenue. The tax levy will be spread among the remaining taxable parcels. From the view of the treasurer collector, it is not a cost-efficient way to raise the revenue and can potentially create a greater expense in processing than it has received in revenue. Cost to mail out these, each of these bills this year was 92 cents per bill. In addition, many of these bills go unpaid, adding additional processing fees in an attempt to collect the outstanding amount. Eventually, the unpaid bills are written off, resulting in negative impact on the overlay. So they're asking that anything under $1,000 value, and usually this is in, say, a small office, they might have a computer and a fax machine, if they're even still out there, fax machines. And there's a value to that, so that's the personal property that they're paying on. And I had that in my law office, you know, in Walpole. So they're asking that if it doesn't reach that $1,000 in value, that they just be wiped off, so.
Okay.
And it's by Master of Law, Chapter 59, Section 5.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the personal property exemption?
I move that we approve the personal property exemption by voting to accept the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, and authorize the town to establish a minimum fair cash value required for personal property count to be taxed, and that that fair cash value to be, it should be $1,000.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Bogart?
Bob, you had a lot of numbers, and I couldn't write them all down. For FY23, how much money was collected from those 115 accounts?
FY23?
Or whatever you said.
Well, it was $1,312.
That was collective?
That total, collective.
From those 115?
From all, yeah, from all the, all the under $1,000 accounts.
We only got $1,300, and it cost 92 cents to send the stuff out.
Yeah, and the big price is in collection.
Got it.
If, you know, if they don't pay, and a lot of times, they don't pay.
Got it.
Because it's so small, and they... You know, I'm looking at some of these bills, it's $1.38. It's 207, 230, 230, $2.53, and it goes up.
Probably costs more to collect them than it does in taxes.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out.
I have a question. I get the $1, $10, but where the $1,000 come from versus say 500?
That's the law, the general law.
It's in the general law.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. And finally, we have the town meeting quorum bylaw.
And just a clarification, you're voting to recommend, not voting on the...
Sorry, that was my mistake. Voting to recommend.
Right, thank you. All right. Finally, we have the town meeting quorum bylaw amendment. All of this has come for us several times now. You know, this was an attempt to clean up the language of what happened last year when we had a quorum issue at town meeting. I think town council has finally got relatively clear language on this. Mr. Fennessey, you reviewed it, correct?
So, yeah, and if you recall that, the way it was worded, that if there was a bonding issue that required 150 for a quorum, then that would carry on throughout the town meeting. This way, once the bonding issues are done with, it reverts back to 75 as a quorum.
Which is what we always thought.
It's always, yeah.
We always thought that's the way it was, it just turned out it wasn't.
Technically, it wasn't.
Right.
So this fixes that, to go back to what it's always been, always thought to be.
Okay.
May I just ask another question?
Absolutely.
So are you sure that's what it says? Because it says 150 voters to vote on any motion proposing the borrowing of money for any purpose, and provided also that a number less than a quorum may from time to time adjourn the same. It doesn't actually say after you've voted on a money issue, it reverts to 75?
No, well, read from the beginning. 75 qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting, including special, provided however that 150 qualifiers shall be necessary to constitute a quorum to vote on any motion proposing borrowing of money.
Okay, so it's that first clause that...
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Qualifies, yeah.
Is there a, is there a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend town meeting quorum bylaw amendment as discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Not any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to our town administrator update.
Just have one. We're so busy this week. North Carver Water District, I just want to give an update on that, that there was a continued delay in getting the well pump wet end and the blower unit due to ongoing component shortage and supply chain issues. The blower unit, which is necessary for the proper operation of the membranes, should be in shortly if it's not already in. The wet end is backordered and should be in eight to 10 weeks. So that was a week ago, so seven to nine weeks. In the meantime, North Carver Water District continues to use the Middle Borough water and is appreciative of their ongoing desire to assist our town. And they keep an eye on the ongoing maintenance and repair, so. So that's where we stand.
So we're probably looking to at least April.
People are happy getting the Middle Borough water.
So we're probably looking to at least April before we're able to get the North Carver Water District stuff?
And, you know, and it's, it's a moving target, you know, with these things, so.
I have a question. So let's say it's eight, let's say it's 10 weeks before that last part comes in, how long after that can we, can we use that?
So what would happen is once that's in, and they test the water, so they'll go through a period of tests with DEP, come down, they'll turn on the water, they'll flush the system, it'll probably take, you know, a couple of weeks beyond that to get it before it's okay to turn the faucet back on.
Okay.
But I got to say, I have received zero complaints. It's been on Middle Borough water, so.
Any questions on that? Anything else, Mr. Fennessey?
No, that's all.
Right, thank you. Let's see, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We have the minutes of January 17, 2023. I don't think they were printed, but they were emailed out to everybody. I don't think they're part of what was printed for us this evening. Did everybody have a chance to review those minutes? Is there a motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 17, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of January 24, 2023.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have an application to use Shirliff Park, the Carver Farmers Market, on Sundays from June to October 29, 2023, from 10 to 5 p.m.
I'll make a motion to approve the application to use Shirliff Park by the Carver Farmers Market.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Wait, discussion?
Discussion.
So I have one quick thing to say. I just remember at one point, a couple of years back, we decided that town organizations, nonprofits, which included Boy Scouts and so on, do not have to pay a fee, and I just wanted to remind people of that. Because for a number of years, they were actually paying a fee. This is a town, this is run by the Agricultural Commission, so it's outrageous, anyway.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Well, that's good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. It is unanimous. Select board announcements. Mr. Hoffman?
I just want to thank everyone that showed up tonight to voice their opinion. As I stated earlier, we all make decisions as a select board on what we're told. We want to make sure we get all the information correctly, not from my neighbors, Barbara and that type of thing. But seriously, but we just want to find out what's available, what all the options are. But I do appreciate everybody bringing up the points, and we should continue that. It was good to see a good crowd tonight, and I just want to, you know, thank the town for doing that, showing up.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to thank people, too, for showing up. It's not always fun to come out at night and wait and wait for things to get done. I think it was a very productive meeting. I was glad so many people spoke, and I think we're all on the same page. You know, we live here, too. This is our town, too. And I also wanted to remind people not to forget Shane Gives Thanks, our food pantry. They always welcome donations.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I don't have any announcements, thank you.
All right. Ms. Bogart?
No.
All right. And I would just echo Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Hewens' thoughts. I think that it's important that we hear from the public on things like this, which is why we scheduled this way. I'm glad so many people showed up. We appreciate everyone's comments, and that's all.
Actually, I do have an announcement.
Yes.
Saying that, I want to thank you for doing what you just said you did with the comment period.
Well, thank you.
Because I think it was really valuable. I know for me, I think it was a great forum. I know we could go for hours, but I actually thought it was really well. So thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Ms. Bogart. I appreciate that very much. All right. That being said...
I second that motion.
Thank you.
I mean, that, I mean, it's, I want to float your boat, but that was a great way